Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 25th. This morning, our invocation will be led by Reverend Edward E. Rogers, Senior, pastor of Hopewell Missionary Baptist Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilor Hunter Williams. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Our Father, we come today in the name of Jesus. We thank you for the city of Birmingham. We ask for your blessings upon the city, upon our mayor, and upon the city council, upon the educational system, and all that makes up this massive city of Birmingham, Alabama. We ask that you bless the citizens as they live and come under your rulership. We ask, God, that you will give the mayor and city council wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and the love for people. To that end, we give you honor, glory, and praise in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have our roll call?
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. Council President O'Quinn.
President. Counsel before us, we have the minutes of the November 5th through 26th, 2024 meetings. We'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
One second. Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All right? All opposed, say nay.
All right, the minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready for the December 3rd, 2024, through February 18th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodson.
Mr. President, good morning to you. Good morning to the entire council. Good to see all of you all this morning. Good morning to the public as well. Good to see everyone. As President and Counsel, I want to pick back up where we left off at 9:00 a.m. on a press conference that was led by Chief Michael Pickett of the Birmingham Police Department, sharing with our community that there's been a breakthrough as well as formal charges added to Damian McDaniel for the killing of our firefighter, Jordan Milton, as well as the assault on... as well as the assault on Sergeant Jamal Jones, who's Mr. Milton's colleague and coworker, who was also shot and survived. In addition to that, Damian McDaniel is also charged with the murder of the UPS worker, Anthony Love, Jr., as well as Mia Nixon. Those charges were formally announced this morning at 9:00 a.m. I had a chance to speak with our fire chief. I had a chance to speak with our fire chief this morning, and I can tell you that a day hasn't gone by where Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service has not thought about their fallen colleague, as well as their other colleague who was severely hurt. Every day, Ms. Rochelle Malone, who all of you all know, Jordan's mother, as well as Mr. Milton, his father, along with their extended family, along with our firefighters across the city. This brings some form of justice. Doesn't totally heal the pain, doesn't take away someone's loved one's loss, doesn't take away the physical toll for Sergeant Jamal Jones, but it does give some form of... it does give some form of justice. Same goes for Mia Nixon and her family. If you are unaware, Mia Nixon's mother, Ms. Nixon, actually works for the municipal court and has worked for them for years, actually bagged her groceries as a kid. And so being a position to call Ms. Rochelle, to be in a position to call Ms. Nixon, and just simply hear their voice and let them express their appreciation for the detectives who've never let up, who kept their foot on the gas pedal. They've done good, and we want to acknowledge the great work of our detectives. But of note, I think it's important that the detectives take this same sense of urgency for all the cases, for all the other mothers who've lost a son or a daughter, for all the other open cases that they're still actively investigating. They'll continue to do the work, and we'll continue to provide those resources. So again, I want to thank Birmingham Police Department for their hard work, and kudos to them for these major breakthroughs on these very public cases that have caused a ripple in our community. I also want to reiterate the Brownstone Clinic. As mentioned last week, I want to share some additional information and reiterate some of the things I said last week. February is Heart Health Month. Again, February is Heart Health Month, and we want to make sure that everyone is aware that heart disease is still the number-one killer of both men and women. For that reason, it's important that we all know our numbers, and I'm referring to cholesterol, blood sugar, as well as blood pressure. And so I want our city employees to be mindful that the city of Birmingham has an employee health clinic that can check these numbers for employees and their families for free, which is actually a lower cost than $3.99. The Brownstone Be Well Clinic, if you are unaware of its location, address is 1705 Avenue North. Again, that's 1705 Avenue North, and you can call 205-202-5650 to make an appointment today. Again, we want to encourage our employees to take advantage of this opportunity, and that extends to all of our employees well beyond City Hall. That's Birmingham Fire Rescue Service, Police Department, Public Works, Municipal Court, and everyone else who was not physically in this building is for you as well. But in addition to that, on next Tuesday and next Thursday, that's March 4th and March 6th, the Brownstone Clinic will be conducting free blood pressure and blood sugar testing for city of Birmingham employees in the Bowel Auditorium Conference Room from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. For more information, you can go to brownstonehealthcare.com. Again, that's brownstonehealthcare.com, but we want our employees to take advantage of the fact that next Tuesday and next Thursday, March 4th and March 6th, Brownstone Clinic will be conducting free blood pressure and free blood sugar testing for city employees from 12:00 to 2:00, the Bowel Auditorium Conference Room. Also, we are excited to announce the Gaston Motel Coffee Shop opening. There'll actually be a ribbon cutting today. I'm told this meeting today will move with break speed so that counselors can get there. But the city of Birmingham Historic Preservation Authority selected Alicia's Coffee to operate the coffee shop at the historic A.G. Gaston Motel. I stated this ribbon cutting takes place today at 11:00 a.m. This black-owned business founded by Alicia Elmore and Rashad Harold is committed to community service, ethically sourced coffee, and fostering meaningful connections. The authority announced a call for proposals for an operator last summer just to bring re-awareness to the process. Their menu features smoothies, teas, and a signature drink named Room 30. For those who are unaware, Room 30 was the war room named after... for the A.G. Gaston Motel where Dr. King planned strategies for the Birmingham Movement. The drink is a handcrafted latte with oat milk, two shots of espresso, and raspberries served. I don't drink lattes, but that sounds good. The shop also has pastries, muffins, and baked goods for Amber's Dessert, a local African-American baker. Let's be sure we support this small business that is located in the historic A.G. Gaston Motel. Alicia Coffee will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. seven days a week. It was brought to our attention several times. We shared it with the public several... two times last week around illegal dumping. You all have seen us do several public campaigns around how to continue to tackle this issue where, whether it's a resident in our city, a wayward contractor, or someone who doesn't live in our city, drives in our city, and treats our city's infrastructure and public right-of-way as a city dump. The dummy campaign, more cameras, and other tools in the toolbox to address this issue. And so we wanted today just to announce to the public how we... the next iteration, and how to continue to report illegal dumping. If you see someone dumping illegally in your neighborhood or community, there are a few things you can do. Step one is to gather information. If you can, again, we don't want anyone to be a vigilante and/or directly engaged, but there are your eyes, there is technology in the form of cameras, as well as your cellular phones. You can get the CarTag number and as much information as possible. If you can, try to safely get photos and/or video of the illegal dumping or site and/or the person dumping. Step two is submit that evidence, the evidence, and you can send that information to illegaldumping@birminghamal.gov. Again, this is the part where we want to overemphasize where there's a repository to collect this information. Again, that is illegaldumping@birminghamal.gov. Please be sure to include the date of the recording, the address or cross streets where the litter was dumped, and a phone number. And then there's the additional... for those who don't use email, you can call 205-581-3111. Again, that's 205-581-3111. There's an additional step, which is we'll take it from there. Officials will review your video and information, and someone will follow up with you. Based on what is presented, 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 a summons could be issued for the accused to appear in court to answer to the allegations. Again, for more information, you can go to birminghamal.gov/illegaldumping. But I also want to note, particularly for those who stay in our city limits, there is no fee for Birmingham residents to drop off items at the East End landfill. You can visit birminghamal.gov/illegaldumping to see its operations, its hours of operations. And as we stated for numerous years, there's also dumpsters available at our cities for Department of Work, Department of Public Works District Offices that are open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for you to drop off anything you want to. There is no need to illegally dump in our city. And I would just say to you, Mr. President and Counsel, I owe you a follow-up. We've tasked the team to go through, are there any holes or gaps in some of our ordinances related to contractors and permits? I think what we find is one of the things that stands out, there's clear law around you need a permit for certain things, and you need a roll-off dumpster. I think a place where there's an opportunity to close the gap is to verify that they actually use, they haul whatever they have done off. And I think that's the part where we can partner together to give PEP code enforcement and everyone else, police department, more tools to hold those accountable, to make sure they're going A through Z through the process, not just having a dumpster. But if we find that they did not actually take it to an official site, then we can hold them accountable post anything that happens. So just look forward to follow-up on that. With that, Mr. President and Counsel, it's good to see you this morning.
Sir.
That concludes the mayor's report.
Councilor Williams has a question.
Hey, Abbott. Good morning. I have a couple of things. One is I wanted to thank you for the presentation we received from you guys on the entire code enforcement piece of what we, you know, have been discussing with the council and your administration. Wanted to give Ms. Thomas a shout-out. I think that the amount of progress that has been made in terms of code enforcement is important, and I think that we need to, you know, not just acknowledge it in a committee of the whole meeting, but I think it's worth acknowledging today as well because it is something that I think that collectively this council, as well as your team, have, you know, been working on and talking about, and Ms. Abbott even banged her hands on the table.
She still has a scar.
Yeah. So it's, you know, it's been something that... and that frustration, you know, is a pass-through of residents' frustrations. So I think it's very important that we say thank you, and especially to your team that worked on it, because I think that we have come a long way, and I think that our citizens are overall happy. I'm very happy that we have four APOST BPD officers on the team. I asked for four for a long time, Mayor, for six years, now I'm going to ask for eight. But, so just to let you know, it seems to me that the most efficient part of the code enforcement, especially from Ms. Thomas's presentation, was the fact that Ms. King has two people that can serve, and that we have four people that can cite people on the spot. And so that was made very clear from both of those presentations, and so that just... we've talked about it for five years, but we're going to keep talking about it. So that's one topic. So thank you, and thank you to Ms. King and Ms. Thomas and everyone that collectively from your team and you that have worked on that, because it's important that we talk about it, not just in the committee of the whole, which really no one watches. The other thing I wanted to ask is, and maybe this is something that can be discussed somewhat offline, but, and I don't even want to say that really he's a terrorist, his name, because he doesn't deserve it, but do you know if he is being charged in federal court or if we are charging him in state court yet? Has that been announced, or was that announced in the press conference?
I can tell you for these cases, a state court, BPD's investigative bureau has worked very, very closely with Jefferson County District Attorney's Office. I did see federal partners there present today, ATF and FBI. What I have been told, these investigations are still active, so nothing's closed, they're still gathering, still building, et cetera, but there was enough to bring charge.
Sure.
Related to what you're saying, I agree with you. Recall Cupcake McKinney. There were state charges and federal charges. I think what's happened in our community, particularly in 2024 with this one person, is at minimum equal to at least having a discussion, but I want to mind my manners. We like our relationship with our current U.S. Attorney and those federal partners, so whatever they decide, we will support. But I am also, I have high confidence in Jefferson County's District Attorney's Office towards these cases that were announced today, and the ones that were announced in the fourth quarter of 2024, related to... actually, there's more than one person. There's another person that's been indicted as well. Forgive me for not mentioning his name, but those two people, he can be held accountable.
Well, and I agree with you, and I would say we not only like, but we love our U.S. Attorney. I think that the amount of focus that she has on local cases is something that she doesn't have to do, but she's chosen to do it to help us out. So, but, you know, if you kill 11 people and you shoot 29, say you're almost at shooting 40 people, you're no... to me, you're a terrorist, and I hope that wherever court this goes, that they seek the death penalty, because it is completely unacceptable that there are almost 40 families that have dealt with one individual shooting them, and that is not for you... I know you're going to mind your manners and probably not respond to that, but I just want to say that the outrage that so many people feel and vocalize it, that 11 people have been killed and 29 have shot and survived because of one terrorist, it's completely unacceptable. And so anyway, those are my comments, and thank you, Mayor, for being here.
Just in follow-up to that, I want to let you know, Mayor, that I reached out to Speaker Ledbetter regarding the backlog of cases in, you know, district and, I think, district court, you know, for, especially on the homicide side. And I saw him in person and also sent him an email, just asking for some feedback on that issue. Haven't received a response yet, but, you know, I think that's another important component of addressing this issue is to make sure that, you know, these families can get justice, you know, quickly, that their cases can be adjudicated, you know, without waiting three or four years for them to go to trial. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Switching back to your report, Mayor, thank you for reminding us about the refuse stations at the Public Works locations. And I know that there are, you know, two dumpsters for kind of ordinary waste. I see from item seven where we have some opportunities to improve curbside recycling. Do you think we could get a place to drop off, you know, people who, like, I collect stuff in my car from the office and from my house, and I drive it to 41st Street, but if I could drive it to somewhere more convenient to drop off, like, cardboard and things like that for recycling, and it not be, you know, commingled with the other trash? Could we... you think we could get, like, a receptacle for recycling added?
That's a great question. Let me, I think, let me, one, talk with Public Works to get their feedback. Here's what we find. You all know the history here, or you know the behavior in our community as well. Maybe 21% of people recycle. So I know, I don't have a problem with you using that receptacle the right way, but if, let's just say, on the happenstance, those other two are field on the day someone drops off, and this one, that's only for recycling, is empty. What would be the actual human behavior there? What would happen? And so I think we want to... what you want, how to keep the integrity of that and not, it not being compromised, or, as you said, mixed commingle. Not sure how to walk that out, but again, that's not my lane either, so let me yield to...
Or maybe a separate location then.
Yeah, let me actually...
One central location. And the other thing I wanted to ask is, could you remind us about, and maybe you or someone on the staff, bulk trash? Like, is, are mattresses, tires, batteries, you know, motors, small motors, are those kinds of things allowable?
Yeah, so I don't know about motors.
I know we see all kinds of stuff on the curb, but I just want to know what we're supposed to be putting up.
About this, what we'll do before the week is out is get some communication up and out. We'll get it to you in your emails, so you can share in your channels the format you choose. But let me just, without saying what it includes...
Yeah, because it might be on the spot. Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to remind people what's appropriate for there...
We can do that.
And ways to dispose of those items.
We can do that. I think what we got to do, y'all, we got to keep catching the bad folk. You got to make examples out of people. I mean, there's certain things you all wanted last week on the code enforcement piece, but I think on this illegal dumping piece, on the continuum at the end, somebody has to be made an example of.
Councilor Abbott?
So Counselor Williams stole what I wanted to say this morning, but I'm going to let him do that because he's younger and cuter. But I did want to, yeah, I did want to thank, I did want to thank you and your staff, especially Katrina Thomas, for the presentation she made, and I know she's got a whole department behind her, but this code enforcement thing, you know, in my opinion, enforcement, code enfor... any kind of enforcement, police, anybody, is our Achilles' heel. We've just done such a horrible job of it over the years, and now we're beginning to pick up, and it's getting better and better. And, you know, we've got the four APOST certified people, and we need four more. And I met one at the gym, and he said he had applied, and he's already APOST certified, and so I know where you can get one, and he's big and strong because he goes to the gym. So I wanted to thank you for that. And the roll-offs, I go to the roll-off on Sixth Avenue, and you just have to be tall to get your stuff in it, you know, because it's a roll-off, and it's eight feet tall. It's tall, so if you really got to be able to toss that stuff to get it in unless you've got a pickup truck to stand in the bed. So that's an issue for women especially. I'm sure that there's some short men, but, you know, it's hard to get your refuse into a roll-off if you're not tall. So you need, like, a little platform next to it or something for people to stand on, you know, to climb up to get their stuff, and it's just very difficult to use for many of us. So I just wanted to point that out because it's something that people, I think, maybe don't think about. And, but this illegal dumping at birminghamal.gov, I'm just so happy to see that because I do confront people, and I know it's not safe. And so, and so I'm glad to have this and to know that we just give the date, the address, and our telephone number so we can be contacted to be a witness, and I'm ready. And that one thing that Public Works does tell people they don't pick up is mattresses, but I can tell you, as the mattress queen in my district because of UAB...
The anti-mattress. The anti-mattress queen.
Yes, I'm the anti-mattress queen, but they do pick them up because they have to. Otherwise, they'd sit in the neighborhood for 20 years. So they say they don't pick them up, but they do pick them up, which I'm glad. So they probably ought to just quit saying they don't pick them up.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, but thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, overall, I'm just, I'm feeling happy because things are beginning to move in the right direction.
Yes, ma'am. Kudos to the team.
Absolutely. We know you're not out doing it by yourself.
Yes, ma'am.
But you're leading the charge.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to say thank you for, you know, the advancements we're making in code enforcement and with illegal dumping. I know that that's something that, you know, all of us experience, but, you know, I know in certain neighborhoods, it's a huge issue, you know, because of a lot of the vacancies that we have, specifically, you know, Engle Nook, Roebuck, areas, you know, around the airport. And so still want to, you know, I know I got a chance to sit down with Mr. James, Director James Fowler, about blocking certain streets off. I still want to make that request.
It's moving.
Yeah.
You'll be pleased, again, when I, when I, when they notify me that it's officially happened, you all will be notified as well. And I'll tell you in the data that you all, was presented to you last week...
Otherwise, they'd sit in the neighborhood for twenty years. So, they say they don't pick 'em up, but they do pick 'em up, which I'm glad. So, they probably oughta just quit saying they don't pick 'em up.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, but thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, overall, I'm just, I'm feeling happy, because things are beginning to move in the right direction.
Yes, ma'am. Kudos to the team.
Absolutely. We know you're not out doing it by yourself.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but you're leading the charge.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanna say thank you for, you know, uh, the advancements we're making in code enforcement and with illegal dumping. Uh, I know that that's something that, you know, all of us experience, but, you know, I know, uh, in certain neighborhoods, um, it's, it's a huge issue, you know, um, because of a lot of the vacancies that we have. Um, specifically, you know, Ingle Nook, Roebuck, areas, you know, around the airport. Uh, and so, uh, still wanna, you know, I know I got a chance to sit down with, uh, Mr. James, Director James Fowler, about blocking certain streets off. Uh, still wanna make that request.
It's moving.
Yeah.
It's, you'll be pleased, again, when I, when I, when they notify me that it's officially happened, you all will be notified as well. And I'll tell you in the data that you all, was presented to you last week. Um, sometime I nerd out on it, and I go deeper in the actual data. I, I find an interesting trend line in four and nine. Um, it, it started, it started a long time ago with red line neighborhoods. And the unfortunate part is that it, it continues to rear its head in 2025 around what's happened. Just from a, a geographical land standpoint, um, four and nine are literally more redlined than pretty much the other seven districts. And then, when you go deeper, you find industries that exist in four and nine. You find, uh, the, uh, amount of, um, homes and floodplains in four and nine. Maybe eight is coming in third, as it relates to the entire city. But four and nine are outliers. And then, you find the, um, air quality issues in four and nine are a little bit more, um, I guess, not as good as the other seven. And there's just, I keep going on the data, the number of houses have been cited, the number of homes, houses that have been removed, the number of infillies that exists. There's just a consist, there's a, it all stems from literally what happened from the founding of the city in red line neighborhoods. And so, Team and I, we actually talk about it all the time, um, about the unique challenges that exist in four and nine that are not necessarily existing in the other seven. It doesn't mean the other seven don't have the same issues. Uh, but four and nine are literally outliers compared to the other seven. It's, and I'm, I'm, I'm literally speaking only from data, in fact, it's not how I feel about it or what I see with my eyes, it's, you can literally follow the data. And so, the question is, does it lend itself, then, to, uh, whether it's why them people entering our city and dumping in that area at a higher rate than other, um, neighborhoods in District Nine or on that side of town? Does it beg the question, and for, um, people entering who are not in our, who don't live in our city limits, coming in, right, there's just a, you anchor certain areas where certain places get more than their fair share? And so, the street piece, I said all that, because the street piece, we gotta find a way to keep that, decrease that. May not be able to stop it all, but definitely decrease and/or capture those who are doing it.
No, and I, I appreciate you, you know, sharing that, because I think a lot of people don't really understand that or take that into consideration, that there was, you know, several industries that were in those areas that, um, really did a lot of harm, uh, to those neighborhoods, like Collegeville. Um, and so, I appreciate that. Uh, I did want to, one other thing before I let you go, uh, Eight Twenty-four Nelson Drive in Roebuck. Wanted to, you know, make sure that I put that, that property on your, your radar. Um, it's been, you know, several stray dogs.
Four Nelson Drive?
Yeah, Eight Twenty-four Nelson Drive. Um, and, you know, it's been, you know, squatters going in and out, um, it's falling apart. And so, just wanted to bring that to your attention. And, and last thing, um, I wanna say thank you to Chief Pickett and, you know, BPD, as well as yourself, um, for the information that, you know, you all just brought before us in terms of, uh, as my colleague said, the terrorist, um, that, you know, was terrorizing our streets. Um, as somebody who, you know, had an opportunity to work with Jordan and knew Jordan Milton, um, and, you know, has had an opportunity to talk to his mother as well, uh, I am happy that we can restore hope back into our city, um, and not have people like him, you know, roaming around, uh, continuously wreaking havoc. Um, even Jamal, like, I appreciate him too, because, you know, uh, very unfortunate situation for us to find ourselves meeting each other, but I've learned a lot about him, learned that he's a lover of life, um, has a beautiful, beautiful family, um, and just a good dude, and, and you just hate to see things like this happening to folks like that. So, thank you.
Counselor Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I had to look it up to make sure that I didn't read this wrong, but there's a Speedy Trial Act that was introduced in the Senate in the House to actually address the backlog of cases. Um, are you familiar with that, Mayor Woodson? Okay, so, 'cause I just Googled it to make sure it was six days ago, 'cause our Attorney General was applauding for that. Um, so hopefully, that'll be able to help us with those backlogs. But I just wanted to kinda echo what everybody else has been saying about code enforcement. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think that's something we have been talking about since I first got on the council, and you told us to be patient, Chaz told us to be patient. And so, I'm, I'm excited to see that, especially when you merged it and put it with PEP. But I do have a question. I think we asked this about after-hours enforcement, because we do have a lot of, um, bad actors that pretty much operate from six PM to maybe three AM in some of our, in some of our neighborhoods. And I know I've gotten complaints from our residents. So, I guess I just have a request for how we can possibly address that.
I think the best thing we can do, um, is can, continue to make, um, advancements in cameras. So, if the personnel cannot exist, um, posts five PM, then at a minimum, technology puts us in a position to start an investigation either that night and/or the next day. I think also allowing, um, continuing to build out the real-time crime center, who's literally, the last two years, has had one priority focus, and that is major crimes via felonies, crimes against persons. Um, but as they continue to build out, that also includes crimes against property, burglary, theft, auto theft. And then, that keeps coming down to misdemeanors and then ordinance violations. That also includes litter dumping and all these other things that are happening, uh, where we can catch people. I think Ms. Thomas said in this meeting, um, last week near the hole, that, you know, they're, they're still in a position, posted happening, to do the investigation starting the next day, when employees come back to work at eight AM. Um, this is the second time I've heard, what can we do after five PM? And so, I'll go back to the team and kinda push and or challenge them, what can we do? But in the best world, ideal world, technology puts us in a position, um, that if we can't catch somebody in real time, it's connected to our real-time crime center. We can, um, if we can't deploy personnel in this building, because they leave after fi, because they leave at five, then at a minimum, we can deploy an Apost officer to engage if they catch it in real time, 'cause it's connected to our real-time crime center.
Okay, so it's like when people park their vehicles on front lawns? 'Cause I don't know about my other colleagues, but I've been told they will take it off during the day, because ain't no personnel is out, and then after five, they'll go park it back on the front lines, for example. So, I'm also talking about those situations.
I would be interested to know what Julia Bernard in Legal Department says about the re, the starting over of time, as it relates to giving seventy-two hour notice.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, are there any caveats, right? 'Cause people play the system.
Yeah.
Totally hear you, right? Or, in the vein of what you've just described, another example is, the truck is on one side of the street, they get the sticker, and they just move to the other side of the street.
Mm-hmm.
Process starts over.
Right, mm-hmm.
So, um, I think we should just talk more about, um, does that require Montgomery or through our own ordinances with extra teeth, that can we change that?
And then, for, um, also our residents that don't speak English as their primary language.
I like what you've done.
Yeah, I, I think...
You, you've, you've set the model, we need to do it in the other eight districts.
Okay, 'cause I know we, I, I don't know if he's still employed with, I think it was PEP, I forgot his name. He, is he, okay, that was good, have a Spanish translator, because I know I've encountered people who will pretend not to know English and really...
The door hangers, right? That's what I'm really talking about, what you and your team did. I thought that was brilliant. And then, in partnership, we put our boots on the ground and, whether residents were outside and/or not, leaving the door hanger to, so everyone in the community.
Okay.
Regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, language barriers, everyone knows, here are all the rules, everyone knows.
Okay. And then, lastly, I do think the illegal dumping is getting better, 'cause there was a, I don't have this part of my district anymore over by black and white photography in that alley. They used to illegal dump very badly over there. I don't see as much trash when I go the back way to my parents' house. So, I think we are making some type of progress in certain areas of cities, so, thank you.
Mr. President, to your colleague's point, and this last point I'll make, I wanna encourage you all to help, I guess, the administration and the professional staff. We shouldn't lead this. We should, we should create enough inertia where this is grass tops. Uh, I'm sorry, grass, grassroots, and it should come up. And so, us engaging our platforms, I know how you all engage your neighborhood officers. But at every level, getting all the way down to the residents in these individual blocks, to be encouraged, if they see it, catch it in real time and follow these steps that we just shared. Um, that is the best way we're gonna catch someone, um, because I think people see it and turn a blind eye. But what we've been, what we've shared last week, as an example, those two people are submitting that up to us. Keep submitting that we want our residents to feel empowered. It's one of the best things and easiest things you can do as it relates to taking your neighborhood back and keeping it clean and safe.
I'm remembering words of a former mayor who said, "You don't have to move to live in a better neighborhood." Um, so, yeah, definitely need, this is a team effort, and need, uh, everyone on board, so, uh, Counselor Abbott?
That was Community Development that said that.
Oh, okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is something that I think is important, because the ma, the, the police operate twenty-four seven. They're in charge of front yard parking. They give citations to people. So, if the guy is parking the car there at night, after he thinks the police have gone home, the police don't go home. The other thing is, the noise ordinance, we seem to have a great deal of difficulty enforcing it. But a lot of those people that are doing midnight renovations are running power tools. So, when people call the police and complain about the noise, the police could be reminded that this guy may be doing this illegally, without a permit, without anything. So, there are lots of things. It's illegal to store a vehicle on the public street. Storage includes that guy that moves it across the street at night, just because he got a seventy-two hour sticker on it, which he tore off. Um, you know, so, there are a lot of things that one department can help, another department can help another one, if they know, if they know they can do that.
I think, Ms. Abbott, I think you're spot on. I believe that this, I think the success, the successes you all are seeing lately is based on team. I'm not talking one department. I, I like this energy I'm seeing from this collaboration between legal, PEP, and the Police Department. I think you'll continue to see that enhance in all things related to violations, whether it's code, um, misdemeanor, et cetera. Um, I, I think they're all to something with their cross-collaboration and rapport with each other. And I think they'll keep walking out these various issues you've named. Um, particularly on the policing side, from the standpoint of the chief, telling his deputy chief of patrol and those four captains, what they're seeing out here and what needs to be addressed in a more timely way or from a op, a tactical operational standpoint of, i.e. a blitz, and just light them up one night for everybody that's on the lawn.
That'd be fun. Let us know when it's gonna happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, we, we have a bunch of student athletes who've been patiently waiting out in the audience while we've provided a lesson in, uh, municipal civics. Um, so, counsel, without objection, we're gonna pause in our, uh, agenda to, uh, do presentations, um, for Phillips Academy, and then, uh, Counselor Woods will follow up with, uh, Huppin High School. So, we'll move on to that. Um, A.D. Kelly, could you bring your, your group up, please?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I'm Coach Watson, the head girls' basketball team. Um, firstly, I want to say thank you for this opportunity to be recognized. Um, this will be the girls', um, back-to-back season of winning. Um, they really have lived up to the motto this season of being built different, separating themselves from the competition. They only lost one game this season, and I wanna just tell them that I'm so proud of them, and I want them to continue to be the best that they can be, um, especially for our eighth graders that are heading onto high school. Uh, we also want to say thank you to the support of our parents and the community.
I'm Tamiya Nelson, the assistant coach.
I'm Tony Johnson, uh, I play forward.
I'm Saraja Coley, and I'm a forward.
I'm Ariana Portis, and I'm a shooter guard.
I'm Alana Semien, and I'm a guard.
I'm Tamiya Volch, I'm a guard.
I'm Trinity Williams, and I'm a forward.
I'm Taylor McGee, and I play point guard.
I'm Lee Thomas, and I'm a forward.
I'm Aleah Brown, and I play point guard.
I'm Belia Reese, and I play forward.
I'm Hannah Ackland, and I'm a guard.
I'm Justin Bryant, and I'm a forward.
Awesome. So, counsel, um, we often host Phillips Academy, and I keep my Letterman sweater in the closet in the office, because you guys are also, always up here so often, uh, winning all these championships. Um, just wanna congratulate, uh, Phillips, and we have the boys', uh, basketball team up here, who'll be up next, um, as well. But, uh, just wanna recognize, uh, Dr. Enzie, who's principal over there. Um, Phillips Academy is, you know, just, uh, an example of excellence in our, in our city, not only in athletics, but also in academics. Uh, so, congratulations to the girls' team, and now we'll hear from the guys.
Uh, good morning. Um, I'm Coach Mosley. And, um, first off, I wanna thank y'all for having us this morning. Uh, we really appreciate that. Um, I also wanna thank Dr. Enzie and, uh, Coach Kelly for giving me the opportunity to be over to these boys. Uh, this is my second season. Um, I wanna thank my staff. I also wanna thank all our supporters. Uh, the boys went twenty-two and oh this season. Um, I don't, I wanna be a little humble, but nobody came close. But, uh, a lot of those kids with those Letterman jackets on, they was, um, part of losing in the Final Four last season. So, this year, we had one goal, and they didn't mess around. So, at this time, I wanna introduce, um, my young, our athletes.
Um, my name is Rottez Allen, and I play point guard.
My name is Dorian Hudson, I play shooting guard.
My name is Robert Jones, and I play shooting guard.
My name is Latiris Koeman, I play shooting guard.
My name is Elijah Jazin, I play point guard.
My name is Kingston Reed, and I play everything.
My name is Omar Fuss, and I play small forward.
My name is Justin Berchen, I play point guard.
My name is Kelly Richberg, and I play center.
My name, my name is DeAndre Moore, I play small forward.
My name is Dwayne Wade, and I play forward.
My name is Corlin Perkins, and I play forward.
My name is Amari Glenn, and I play guard.
My name is Carson David, and I play shooting guard.
Good morning. My name is Junius Hazen, I'm an assistant coach.
Michael Moore, I play coaching, power forward.
Coach, Coach Kelly?
My name is Justin Kelly, I'm the athletic director. I wanna thank you guys a lot for letting us come here, uh, to be recognized. I wanna thank the coaches. I wanna thank all stakeholders. I wanna thank the administration, and also, I wanna thank the parents, uh, for allowing their child to participate in extracurricular activities. Thank you.
Congratulations. We have these letters for the coaches.
All right, we can get the Huffman Vikings to come on up to the front.
Uh, good morning, good morning. We have the opportunity today to have our Huffman Vikings, uh, cheerleaders in the building. Uh, they have really developed a dominant program, uh, here in Birmingham and so excited to have the opportunity to recognize them, uh, specifically their recent championship, uh, that they brought home. And so we've got, uh, Principal John Lyons, Athletic Director, uh, Steve Ward and Coach Moore here. And so I'm gonna give them opportunity if they would like to, uh, just share anything about the, the team, the program, and just all the work that they're doing, uh, to invest in our student athletes. And so, I'd love the principal, come, come on.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, we are certainly humbled to be here this morning and I love to take the opportunity to brag on my kids, you know? I'm so proud of them, especially my cheerleaders. These young ladies through the ups and downs, the good times and the bad time, the wins and the losses. Sometimes people only see the team. They forget about the cheerleaders in the background. They go through those waves of emotions with us. And these young ladies have been the backbone of our school for several years. This year they reclaimed, and I say reclaimed, cause we are the dominant cheerleading program in this city. They reclaimed their title as the best cheerleading program in the city and ladies, I commend you. You have a great job. That could not happen without a great team that works behind them. And I'm gonna give them the opportunity, uh, I'm gonna give the coach opportunity to, um, uh, introduce herself, Coach Moore and her staff, but also our great athletic director. I know he didn't wanna say anything, but, uh, Coach Ward, who guided our basketball team to a twenty-six and five record this year, did an outstanding job this year. Uh, he is also here today and, uh, Coach, I want you to come up and say a few words about these young ladies. I know you didn't wanna say that, but.
Good morning, everyone. I'll be, I'll be really short, but I've had the honor to witness, uh, Coach Roland and the young ladies for a number of years. But they are a solid group of young ladies. Uh, she holds them to a high standard. And they probably practice more than in a program on, on campus, uh, at, at the school, whether it's weekends, uh, you know, evenings. But they, they have a tremendous program and they do a phenomenal job. So, uh, without further ado, I'll bring Coach, Coach Moore to introduce her cheerleaders.
Good morning. I just wanna say thank you to you all for inviting us and acknowledging us. Um, it's been a long time coming that where cheerleading has been acknowledged and we really appreciate the fact that you acknowledge us here today. I wanna first thank my principal, my athletic director and counselor, um, uh, Woods for, um, always supporting us and the things that we try to do at Huffman High School to set a positive, um, environment for the young ladies at Huffman High School. They stand by us. I must thank these young ladies who will stood a whole lot during this year and their parents. My assistant coaches could not be here today because they work other jobs. I would like to thank them. That's Raven Washington, Kristin Walker and Miss Katrina Rush. It takes a village, as they say all the time, and it really takes a village for us. Um, I wanna thank these young ladies. I'll let them, uh, come up and introduce themselves. Um, we did, we have won the, uh, championship in Birmingham City for six years straight. Well, not straight, we did five. Then COVID hit, then we won again. The last two years we came in second, but that's okay. We had, came in second to a great team. All our teams are really, um, coming up and rising to the occasion. But we came back again strong this year and I just wanna thank the young ladies, their parents and the administration. So I'll let them come and introduce themselves and at the end I'll let the captain speak. Thank you so much.
My name is Jason Burton. I'm a sophomore.
My name is Ari Creighton and I am a sophomore.
My name is Kiaria Bailey and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Mariah Beth Montney and I'm a senior.
My name is Lila Watson. I'm a freshman.
Good morning. My name is Selma Ayaw Water and I'm a freshman.
My name is Michaela Kennedy. I'm eleven grade.
Good morning. My name is Michaela Malden and I am a junior.
Good morning. My name is Kamari Turner and I'm a junior.
Good name. My name is Carter James Stain and I'm a junior.
Good morning. My name is Celia Evans. I'm a sophomore.
Good morning. My name is Bailey Letham and I'm a sophomore.
Good morning. My name De'Adra Horn and I'm a sophomore.
Good morning. My name is Cory Burrows and I'm a senior. I came in as a freshman and we won my first year, the second year and the third year. We came out in second. And then this year we won and I'm so glad to say that I'm leaving and we got our title back. Oh, and I won individual this year too.
I think this is a good opportunity too, uh, since we're honoring Huffman High School to say a word about our Birmingham Promise intern that's actually here at City Hall getting the opportunity to, uh, see the magic, whatever y'all wanna call it, but see how the, how, how the sausage gets made here. And so we're excited to, to have them here and have this opportunity to let them see our work up close. And so quickly, uh, whereas excellence and success is, and competitiveness is achieved through strenuous practice, tenacity and dedication, nurtured by devoted coaching and strategic planning, athletic competition enhances the moral and physical development of young people of this great city. It prepares them for the future by instilling in them the value of teamwork, fairness and competition. The Birmingham City Council is justly proud to recognize the Huffman High School Vikings who hosted the twenty-twenty-five Birmingham City Schools Cheer Competition. And whereas with strong leadership, hard work and determination on Saturday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five in Birmingham, Alabama, the Huffman High School Cheerleaders gladly and proudly secured the enormous twenty-twenty-five victory in their home gym, sweeping every category they were eligible for, including overall champions, large varsity traditional and large varsity game day performance. Along with Viking Cory Burrows earning the individual winner trophy. And whereas the athletic talent displayed by this cheerleading squad is due in great part to the efforts and encouragement of the Huffman Viking High School teachers and coaches. The largest of seven high schools in, in the Birmingham City School System, Huffman is a magnet school that is open to students from across the district. And whereas ath- athletically and academically, the cheerleading squad has flourished and exhibited respectable collaboration, proving themselves to be a captivating combination of talent that resonates favorably on their school and community. A special thank goes, thanks goes to Principal John C. Lyons, the faculty and the staff of Huffman High School for their unwavering support throughout the twenty-twenty-five cheerleading season. And whereas proud to be Vikings, the Huffman High School Cheerleaders consist of the outstanding athletes that clearly made a positive contribution to the spirit of excellence from the beginning of the cheerleading season to the end. The sisterhood displayed immense athleticism, reputable sportsmanship and honor, which validates that these squad members are high achievers. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Birmingham with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, hereby salutes and congratulates the Huffman High School Cheerleaders on their remarkable twenty-twenty-five win, adopted this twenty-fifth day of February, two thousand twenty-five at the recommendation of Counselor Clinton Woods. Uh, so very excited about them. They, they put in a lot of work and earned a lot. And, uh, invite Principal Lyons back to say something about the academic prowess as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to say also, I'm so proud of these young ladies. You know, academically, all those three-point-oh GPAs are higher. So that's very impressive and that's a high standard that there's more hold them to. And to have these young ladies do what they do, put in the time that they put, they put in some time. Cheerleading is hard, hard at work. I thought playing football was hard. I see the cheerleaders, they, they keep them going all night. When I leave at seven o'clock at night, they still there on some nights. And then they have to move them heavy mats and push out and stuff. They said, they have, and then they come and take over my whole office. I don't have an office. They, it's their office. They take over. I just work there. So cheerleaders are everywhere and I'm so proud of them and what they've accomplished this year academically and athletically. So I just wanted to say that again. They work hard. They rarely are acknowledged from a public standpoint. That's across all sports. Cheerleading is kinda under, uh, acknowledged. But today you all have gave them their flowers and we appreciate it.
Move for unanimous consent on the resolution?
Second.
All right, all opposed? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All right, all opposed?
All right, resolution is approved. Thank you. All right, uh, councilors, we have a couple of other presentations, but we're gonna go back to our regular order of business. Um, so our, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, please read through our consent agenda.
Okay, consent agenda starts on page two. With item one, uh, page three, item two is on consent. Skip over to page nine, item three is on consent. And we pick back up on page eleven with items six, seven, eight and nine. Page twelve, items ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen are on consent. Page thirteen, we conclude with items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. Uh, please note you have one additional item.
Okay, uh, I would like to add item nineteen to the consent agenda. That is simply adding an additional thirty days to, um, that agreement that the council has, uh, already approved, uh, twice. Uh, so this is, uh, just an additional extension needed to, um, do some of the due diligence on that, uh, agreement. So, uh, Councilor Clark?
Thank you. I'd like to remove item seven from the consent agenda in hopes that we can just get a little idea of what's being planned. Item seven.
Item seven, page eleven. Okay, any others? All right, uh, we also have items one and two that are public hearing items. Are there any members of the public that, uh, wish to remove either items one and two from the consent agenda? Seeing none, uh, we, we ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm over approval.
All right. Councilor Abbott and who's the second? I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Who was the second? Ball, Councilor Ball. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, uh, consent agenda is approved. So our first item will be item number four.
Okay. Item number four, one second please. Item four. Item four and ordinance. In accordance with section eleven, that's one oh two, that's one, and forty-one, that's sixteen, that's, I fit the code of Alabama law to rather the mayor to execute and enter into a two-year intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of Birmingham and Jefferson County, Alabama, authorizing the county to purchase certain services, materials for use by the parties in order for the county in Birmingham to make improvements to and paid portions of Fourth Street, Fifty-Fifth Street, Southwest Birchwood Street, Coldberg Road, Linwood Street, Montevallo Road, Raceway Park, Red Mill Road, Sycamore Avenue, Ten Mill Road and Woodley Street in Birmingham, Alabama, Jefferson County. The county will be designated as the joint purchasing or bidding agent for materials and labor. And will add this work to its open paving contract. Um, I'm sorry, open paving contract for, uh, or utilized force and account labor. The county will invoice Birmingham for the construction costs and Birmingham shall pay the invoiced amounts prior to the county beginning work. The total cost to be paid by the city to the county shall not exceed three hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-eight cents. The county will assume responsibility for the management of the project. Except as expressly provided in the agreement, no party to the contract shall have any other power to incur any debt, which shall become the responsibility of any other contracting people. After completion and acceptance, the city shall assume responsibility for future maintenance of the roadways. This is an item of permanent operation and you see to pass it today. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Okay, it's out. Council President Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion on the item, please.
Motion on the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right, um, please also note that, um, this item was also recommended by Transportation and Infrastructure Committee and also Budget and Finance. Okay? Any discussion? All right, we ready for the vote? Uh, Councilmore, you have a question?
I did have one. Um, when will, I guess, the work move forward? When will this take place?
Let me get that answer for you, Councilor, just a second. Councilmore, um, so Colin Alexander from BDOT presented yesterday. I believe this, uh, work is in progress.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Colin Alexander. I serve as program manager with the Birmingham Department of Transportation. Uh, do you mind repeating your question, Counselor?
Uh, I was just asking, when would this, uh, work start and where would it begin?
Sure, um, so it is gonna be this fiscal year. Um, so they're planning to start, I think they were planning to start end of March, early April for their whole package. Um, I don't have a detailed schedule in terms of when the Birmingham portions would be paved, but it's gonna be paved this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item four is approved. Item five, please.
Item five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and sixty-five cents to execute a quit plane deed to Catherine Rapier for the sale of property legally described as lot five according to the survey of Copeland's property. As recorded in map one, page twenty-five in the prob- made office of Jefferson County, Alabama, located at one twenty-four sixtyth Street North, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one two, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure, municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Same thing, this item is an item of permanent operation. Did you see to pass today?
Motion for unanimous consent?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Council President Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion on the item. Item is before you.
Okay, any discussion on this item? We're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item five is approved. Item seven, please.
Item seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, submit, execute, spend, accept and to take any and all actions as are appropriate and necessary in accordance with the terms of the agreement submission requirements and grant agreement with the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six recycling grant to promote local recycling. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six recycling grant to promote local recycling efforts by providing reimbursement grants to local governments to develop, implement, and enhance recycling in amount of two, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to programs to expand the city's curbside recycling services and education and outreach campaign at no cost to the city. Motion, please.
Second.
Alright, councillor Clark, you had questions on this item?
Yes, just um wanting to understand a little more about our plans. This is exciting to me.
So, as I come to the mic, I want to ask the team to come up, which consists of various departments. P E P, Public Works, um, Keep Birmingham Beautiful as a collective. Look, I know this is important to you all, like literally each of you individually and collectively as a city council body. I also know it's in, it's important to our general public. I think for us, in particular as it relates to this item, this subject, this topic, recycling. I think we wanna, we strive to lean in on that core value of efficiency. There are, there are only two ways to do recycling in Birmingham, inefficient or efficient, and I think we've tried to get more efficient at it. And I'm gonna give kudos and yell this mic, cuz I'm literally just up here to set the stage and a frame. I figured you wanted a presentation.
Not.
Or at least kind of.
Not a presentation.
Well, let us know what you want, so I can tell them that.
Yeah, well, um, just an understanding, cuz it seems like once we approve this, it doesn't really have to come back, so anything we can know, just to know what's gonna happen.
The biggest thing is.
And, and also the bins. I've had questions about those bins, because I felt like that was a way that we could target who's likely to be recycling, because they've requested a bin and I thought we're gonna have other opt-in ways to make it more efficient, so we're not riding everywhere. But I do, I'm, I'm intrigued by the education and outreach campaign, cuz I think the more people know the better they'll do, and, and not just in recycling, but composting. I don't even know if that's included, but I think uh councillor Abbott could give a seminar in that, but we could just tape her telling people how to compost and play it everywhere.
Mr. President, I'll give the mic to um Director Josh Yates of the Birmingham Department of Public Works. Um, he'll introduce those who are with him and give you a snippet of everything he just brought up.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, councillor president, pro tem, council members. Uh, with us today, we have uh Ms. Shawde with our uh Keep Birmingham Beautiful and the uh P E P team, uh Director Roberts with our uh Equipment Management Group uh team, as well as Ms. Adrian with our Grants Team. Uh, this team, over the past two years, has been uh putting in for, with the help of this council and administration, been putting in for grants associated with recycling with the state of Alabama. This is a continuation of that. Over the last two years, we've received one point two million. This is in a request to ask for an additional seven hundred thousand and change for uh a, an extra truck, uh five thousand additional carts, uh educational components, uh as well as um what was the other item? What was that?
Electronic recycling. Electronic recycling.
Electronic recycling, okay. Uh, so there's a, a number of different items that we're requesting with this grant, uh to help move into a more efficient program. Uh, the number of carts requested would cover all the people that are currently on the list that you asked about, uh that have opted in for recycling. Uh, we'll be able to um uh supply all those carts uh to the people that have signed up to date uh with this grant.
Councillor. Councillor Abbott?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about recycling at City Hall. I don't think Public Works is in charge of it, but I'm sure you have to come pick it up. Are we still recycling? It's hard to tell.
Yes, ma'am. So the recycle is taken downstairs and our teams come by uh at night to gather the garbage and the recycling.
Okay.
My understanding.
Well, I noticed that the cleaning people put plastic liners in all of the recycling bins, which is kind of stupid, because you're not supposed to put liquid in with your recycling. You know, the wet stuff gets taken to the dump. So, I'm really excited about us getting more carts, but I think the educational component, you know, I see people putting their, because they haven't gotten a cart yet, they're still putting their bins, and they put them out in the rain. Well, all that wet stuff goes to the dump, and it contaminates the people who do it right. So, education, the educational component is really big to let people know when they're making a mess instead of recycling.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright, councillor Clark?
I just wanna say that electronic recycling is really exciting, cuz I think even just with cell phones, I don't know how many of old ones you all have, like collecting in your house, but, you know, having somewhere to take those would be great. Um, thank you.
Could we hear about that, about the electronic recycling? Cuz we know the county does it, but I didn't know we were doing it.
So, good morning again. My name is Shawde Hammond and I serve as the Keep Birmingham Beautiful Director for the city of Birmingham in the P E P department. Um, so throughout the year, our Stormwater Management Department, as long, as well as K V V partners with our stormwater groups within the county. So we work with Jefferson County Health Department, Jefferson County, the um actual courthouse, we work with Bessemer, uh Stormwater Management Department, as well as Leeds Stormwater Management Department. So, we have about five events that we host. Um, we, our next event is actually April the twelfth. And so that's Household Hazardous Waste Day. And so on, at that time, residents without, throughout the Jefferson County area can come, pull up, bring everything that's on the list. So you can pretty much clean out your whole kitchen, seek. And so um this location, there are three locations, I'll share the flyer um with you. Uh, the actual locations are in Gardendale, Bessemer, and then there's a Leeds location, it's actually Irondale, so it's right outside of the Birmingham city limits. And so I will make sure I share that flyer. Um, I'll share this with you. This past uh January the nineteenth, we had a Household Hazardous Waste Day, I'm sorry, electronic takeback, and we had over nine hundred and thirty-one households that just came to bring their uh, their, their waste. So we have ways that we are um alleviating and doing things throughout the year, and so we just ask that all residents continue to participate in that um and get your stormwater calendars, and you'll have their uh good information in them.
Councillor Clark?
Sorry to dominate here, but I know that District Seven had one. Um, Wardine, you had a electronic recycling event in District Seven that I brought a lot of stuff to.
Thank you.
And I know the zoo has one, but um, are, do we support those or?
That is, that is the city of Birmingham Stormwater Management Department, yes, that's P E P, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions, discussion? Councillor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you Shawde for, um, and let me get one of those calendars off.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate all the hard work that you run to the space and that you do. Um, and I know um Madam Pro Tem did have one. Thanks councillor Clark for lifting this information, cuz I got some stuff I need to throw away.
We'll share it, for sure.
Appreciate it. And thank all of you all. Um, and my recycle bin was picked up this morning, so thank you councillor Clark, cuz I'm recycling now.
Great, councillor Abbott?
That's good news. Um, I wanted to ask if there's any plans or any dreams of the future of having a drop-off place for electronics and stuff like that, because I've gone and sat in line at the recycling days for like an hour and a half in line and you're, you're, in your, they tell you not to get out of your car or truck, so you're running your engine for an hour and a half, polluting the air and, you know, it seems kind of not so smart. So, is there a possibility that there will ever be a place to drop off these items where you go by and you drop it off and you drive somewhere else and?
Well, at this time, we're, we're, we are going to hold that, because we're trying to create behavioral change. And in creating behavioral change, creating drop-off sites, it creates this nuisance. Because again, if you don't know how to recycle the correct way, you're not going to do the, the right thing. And so right now, we are just going to continue our drop-off event. Um, and we're going to grow that, because we, we have, we do realize that we have more uh recycling where people have, want more ways to get rid of their items. And so we are going to look at adding more events. So right now, we're currently doing the four events, the two household hazardous waste days, but we're looking to add two additional to three additional events, so that it's like constant, and that way we'll have, you'll have the opportunity. Um, and then again, just take advantage of signing up to opt-in. Um, we will, we will grow it that way and eventually, hopefully, we will have a drop-off site, but right now, we are just trying to create the behavioral change.
Okay, well, good. I just wanted to know what the future held. Thanks.
It's bright, it's bright. We just gotta keep growing.
Alright, councillor Clark, this is your last question.
I just wanna suggest that we try to leverage locations where we have people, like a rec center or a library, where you know, there's staff there to sort of oversee what's being dropped off, so that it's not the wrong thing. You know, cuz the bins don't, I don't know how big they need to be, but I don't know.
Well, they have people there that take your stuff and put it in the right place.
I'm saying to have something ongoing.
Well, she says we're not anytime soon.
Okay. Working on it, thanks.
Alright, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, item seven is approved. Item eighteen, please.
Item eighteen, a resolution setting a public hearing March the twenty-fifth two thousand and twenty-five to consider the adoption of a resolution sent to the vacation on the following three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to in between Tenth Street, Southwest and Long Avenue, and perpendicular to in between Alabama Avenue Southwest and Fulton Avenue Southwest at Birmingham, located in nine oh four, nine oh eight, and nine twelve Fulton Avenue Southwest on behalf of M D four L L C owner, so that the owner can consolidate property. Case number S U B two thousand twenty-five dash two.
It was uh Clark and Tate.
Alright, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item eighteen is approved. Alright, that concludes our business items. I'm gonna hand it off to Pro Tem Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to allow us to go back to our presentations. That's okay? We did, we did that, we consented that and approved it.
Yes, that was the only consent.
Okay, that was a question about item nineteen. We did consent it. Sorry. Yes, thank you. Alright, thank you. At this time, councillors, we do have two additional presentations. The next one is Ms. Natalie Nelson Parker, C E O of Civitas Consulting Group, and they're gonna give an overview of the B H M Black Business Census Initiative. Thank you very much.
Good morning, city council members, Mayor Woodfin and his staff, and the amazing people of the magic city. My name is Natalie Nelson Parker. I'm the C E O of Civitas Consulting Group, where we help organizations close the gap of capacity constraints with proven scalable solutions. I have the privilege of leading the community and volunteer engagement team of the Birmingham Black Business Census. Today, I'm an entrepreneur who's building and scaling my business in Birmingham. Even though I transitioned from another state, I have quickly realized that this city is unique. There are opportunities for black business owners because of our rich history, a growing ecosystem, and a community that actually values innovation. But we have a challenge. We don't have an accurate count of black-owned businesses in Birmingham in two thousand and twenty-five. Without that data, it's difficult to direct resources, funding, and support where needed most. If we can't count them, how can we fully support them? And so the Birmingham Black Business Census is a citywide initiative to collect real-time data on black-owned businesses, who they are, where they are, and what they need to grow. It's for business owners operating businesses right here in Birmingham, from any industry and from all of our communities. Black businesses are the heartbeat of our local economy, but they remain underfunded and underrepresented. We need this data so that black businesses could remain visible and not invisible. And so today, we're asking for your support. We want you to help us and partner with us to encourage black business owners to take the census. If you own a business or you know owners in your district, please help us ensure that they are counted. We ask that you share it. Help spread the world through word, through your networks and newsletters, and invite others to present at your community meetings. We have some of our community ambassadors, and we have over fifty volunteers already signed up. We also ask that you help us to recruit additional volunteers. Mobilizing volunteers in the communities that represents is so key to our outreach. And so we ask that you encourage your community members to join us in the field, as we say, we're hitting the streets. And they can sign up at volunteer dot B H M blackcensus dot com. This census is about visibility, it's about opportunity, and about the future of economic empowerment that we can cultivate right here in Birmingham. With your support, we can ensure that Birmingham's black businesses count and can be able to thrive. We have, for your um information, as well as your use, provided some materials in a black folder. We've also provided it digitally, so that you can feel free to share with your districts. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you for making businesses count in Birmingham.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parker. Councillors, any questions regarding this? Yes, Ms. Abbott?
This may be a question, question for, for the staff, the mayor's staff. Do we not keep data on minority businesses in our city?
Yes, we do.
So, why can't they get it from you?
So.
I mean, if they can't find them, and you know where they are.
We'll follow up with the councillor's office to make sure that there's synergy between these two efforts.
Yeah, it just seems like that would help a lot. Kick it off with big numbers.
Any other questions? Councillor?
Thank you, um, Madam Pro Tem. Um, so first of all, thank you for the work that you all are doing um in this regard. Um, I'm curious, after you get the, the information and you identify these businesses, what, what are next steps at that point?
Well, we know that all solutions are, that are effective and that are proven are driven by data. And so we just need a more accurate count of the different industries, the business owners, who they represent. And the hope is to be able to take that data and create what will be a black business center right here in Birmingham, uh, to be able to provide real-time solutions for what we're hearing in the field. And we do have to say thank you to the amazing business owners in Birmingham. We've collected over three hundred uh businesses uh who have been censused, and the response has been overwhelming uh to feel not only that they're being counted, but they're being seen and they're being heard. And I think it's because of the amazing community ambassadors and volunteers who represent those communities, uh who's taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Clark?
Thank you. I don't wanna discourage participation, but I think, you know, our revenue and licensing division would probably like to know about the census report once it's completed. But also, um, who, who's, how is this funded? I know it's volunteer, you're recruiting volunteers to do the legwork, but I would, I would assume your services are not free and that, um, you know, who's, how is the work being sponsored and how will it be utilized?
So through the uh investment of Innovate Alabama, there are four companies uh that are coming together who are minority-owned business owners and women, uh, and we're leading different areas of the project. I'm representing the community and volunteer engagement piece. And so we're so grateful for um that particular partnership, uh, as well as other organizations uh like the mayor's office and others who uh have come alongside to see that this is meaningful and necessary work.
Okay, so this is kind of your own initiative and you got some funding support through Innovate Alabama?
It is not my initiative, I do know.
Oh, okay.
Um, but we are a partnership uh of several companies who are doing this work and leading the charge.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillor Tate?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Are you guys doing um any listening?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tim. Are you guys doing, um, any listening sessions?
Yes, we have a series of events. We will also share that, uh, with you. We also have continuous training, particularly for those who are in the field. Uh, and if you go to B, um, B Ham Black Census dot com, you can see all of the different ways that you can get involved and all of the events that we're, um, going to be participating in as well.
Okay, yeah, I just encourage you to share that out, you know, with each of us to, cuz we all have, we pass out news in our, um, districts. And so that will be a part of something that I will put in the newsletter. But I did see a billboard on Caraway Boulevard that caught my eye.
Absolutely. And please feel free, we will share this digitally with you as well. But if there is something happening in your district, we have an amazing team who's here, uh, to represent and to share, uh, and to, uh, make sure that the word is out and that everyone is counted.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Counselor Woods?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I'm interested, I think, in the, um, interested in learning more about the ability to deliver value on the back end to those businesses. And so I know, uh, like, there's been conversation here, there's a desire to, you know, ensure businesses have the information they need to like scale, make sure that they're structured properly, uh, even understanding, uh, how to get what you wanna get done at City Hall and being able to, uh, get that information further upstream. And so definitely interested in following and getting more understanding around just what that value delivery, uh, proposition looks like. I think extremely important first step, identifying all the businesses. But I think how do we, uh, align that with information that's needed, the information that can be helpful to them to grow their business and structure properly.
Absolutely. And, and that's why this initiative is so important, so that we can have that real time data to be able to provide those proven solutions.
Thank you. Thank you again for bringing this information to us. I know that, um, at one point D seven, we wanted to try to reach out to all of our minority owned businesses in D seven. And so we were looking for where we could get that list and how we could get this information. So very excited. Again, I'd like to see what happens on the back end as well and how as a counselor, we can support those businesses. But for me, it's that identification and knowing of where they are. So thank you.
Absolutely. And all of you have a partner packet, both hard copy and digital. So you can feel free to share to your networks. The messaging and the templates are there for your convenience.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next presentation is an overview of the Housing Authority of Birmingham District. They want to give us an overview of their strategic plan. Uh, Ms. Dontrill Young Foster and other chief executives are here to make this presentation for us today. Come on up here Seth and identify yourself and introduce your team.
Thank you. I was looking for Dontrill. I was like, I don't know. She's me today. But, uh, good afternoon or morning, still morning?
Still morning.
All right. Well, thank you. Good morning, um, everyone. Good morning, councilors. And thank you for allowing me to make this presentation to you today, um, and provide a brief overview of H A B D's two thousand twenty five through two thousand twenty nine strategic plan, um, build, thrive, grow. My name is Seth Embry and I'm the, uh, Senior Advisor and Chief Strategist, uh, at the Housing Authority, uh, which means a lot of things. But today, uh, generally, I'm at your disposal. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Um, but I want to start with, um, giving acknowledgement of many of you's, uh, deep commitment to the Housing Authority and to our residents, um, and showing up and listening, um, to our residents going door to door sometimes, uh, and really taking the time to understand their needs, uh, and sometimes providing much needed funding to support our initiatives and our programs. Uh, so on behalf of our more than twenty two thousand residents and our president and CEO, Dontrill Young Foster, thank you very much, uh, for your partnership. Uh, I think there is a presentation. I don't know how that's supposed to happen.
There it goes.
Okay, there it is. So, um, two thousand twenty five through two thousand twenty nine, build, thrive, grow. Uh, the mission of the Housing Authority Birmingham District is to provide the highest standard of affordable housing, um, while fostering inclusive and vibrant communities and serving as a catalyst for opportunity. The soke are tied together. They guide our shift to strategies that provide durable pathways to self sufficiency for our residents and respond to our mandate for revitalizing aging communities to meet the city's housing needs. Uh, the strategic, strategic plan was developed over nine months of engagement, deep, deep engagement with stakeholders, some of whom are in this room here, um, resident staff, community leaders and our leadership. Just as a note, uh, H A B D was first organized in August of nineteen thirty five. So that means this summer, we'll be celebrating ninety years of service to the Birmingham community in partnership, uh, with, uh, this and prior councils and, and mayors and, uh, organizations from all across the city. And that's kind of one of the themes of, of the strategic plans, to continue those partnerships. Um, and we take pride in being dedicated and fulfilling our mission to providing access to affordable housing for Birmingham's, uh, citizens. So our first goal here, I, I mentioned propel people. And so I'll get into each of these in a little bit. But what we're thinking about here is how, how do we implement, um, techniques to, as we have a larger mandate of, of transforming our communities? How do we make sure our residents, also staff and, and stakeholders are engaged and able to support, invest in our residents and invest in what we're doing, um, in relationships that are mutually beneficial? And our second strategic goal is around transforming communities, um, so actively investing, um, again, with resources to transform what the housing we offer looks like, to expand choice, um, again, through strategic partnerships in the community. Um, so our first goal, if we go to the next slide, our first goal starts predictably with our residents. H A B D is a unique provider of a multitude of, um, services, affordable housing, workforce development, self sufficiency programs, health and wellness, education and much more. These are life sustaining and life advancing services that are critical to the families that we serve. As a backdrop, um, just by federal law, seventy five percent of the families that we serve, when they come into our programs, they're extremely low income, which means in Birmingham for a family of two, your income is around or no more than about twenty five thousand. Um, and families that we serve, which are, they average incomes around fifteen thousand dollars. So family of two, our families average two and a half people. And so their average income is, uh, around a little bit more than fifteen thousand dollars a year. And so these are a very special, um, important segment of the Birmingham population. And so obviously, economic advancement is important as long as, as, as well as us providing the foundation of, of affordable housing. So the services that we prepare, um, that we provide our residents are to prepare them, uh, for housing options which will require a greater degree of independence and progress towards self actualization. We pay deep attention also to the needs of our staffs. And so under people, we have resident staff and external stakeholders. So we pay deep attention to our staff. Um, so we're looking to increase their capacity, technical abilities and also their job satisfaction. Also in our plan, we look towards our external stakeholders. So we work across the city with a number of organizations, um, from Woodland United, which is helping us to craft a transformation plan for Kingston Woodland Communities, with our, uh, Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant that we were awarded last year. U A B, which, I mean, they do everything from food security to health and wellness. Um, they're partnering on our Connected Streets Initiative to help guide our, our plans, uh, with the city that the community development actually leads, um, to improve the health, the physical, um, assets in the Smithfield community. Obviously with the city and the various departments, B P D, community development, P E P, we couldn't do the work that we do, um, without many of the city's departments. And so I could go on and on. Uh, but the takeaway here is that we don't do our work alone. And I already mentioned that for ninety years, we've, we've been partnering. And that's how we get our work done through partnerships. Uh, and we'll continue to do that in ways that are, uh, innovative, mutually beneficial, uh, and results oriented. So next on transforming communities, this is, you know, the, the, the more visible kind of work that we do. Um, it's as important as the work that we do with our families. Um, and we're transforming what our affordable housing looks like. So H A B D first began the operation of public housing in the late nineteen thirties. And some of those properties are, are still standing to that. Smithfield Court, um, Ilton Vision, uh, Village was, uh, nineteen forty one. But we have properties that are, I mean, as old as the organization itself almost. And then we have some newer ones as well. And so what we really are doing is thinking about how the needs of both the city and our residents have changed and ensuring that our housing options match the modern needs of families here in Birmingham. And we are in overdrive to meet those needs. Our goal overall is to keep the same number of units that we have, which is around four thousand. But, um, through redevelopment, both at current sites and new locations, focusing on right sizing our developments. So I mentioned, what did I say? Smithfield, Smithfield has almost five hundred units. Mark Village had five hundred units. Ilton's at four seventy eight. And so we have those large, really large properties and then we have some smaller ones. Um, Cooper Green, which we just had, uh, the celebration kind of kick off for the redevelopments at two twenty seven. So that's one of our smaller properties. But in any case, we're trying to think about what the right size is for having affordable housing that's also mixed income and inclusive, like we talked about before. We're looking to enhance public safety through our partnership with the city and B P D. Um, over the last three years, crime has decreased at our properties fifty seven percent. And that's substantial, but it's not enough. And families need to live somewhere where they feel safe, where they feel cared for and where they're also invested into the public safety of their own neighborhood and they feel like they have a sense of ownership. And so we're continuing to work with B P D and others, um, to increase safety in our communities. Uh, we'll invest in upgrades that positively impact livability, health outcomes, ener, health outcomes and energy efficiency. And then lastly, through our nonprofit arm, which is the Magic City Housing Development Corporation, uh, we're being innovative about how we activate vacant land that we own, you know, a good deal of vacant land in the city. But how we activate that land and also other processes working with the land bank and others, uh, to spur revitalization across Birmingham's ninety nine neighborhoods. Um, if we delve a little bit more into the people, just briefly, we're thinking about funding to literacy and asset building. Um, you know, in the, the larger background or backdrop rather of our situation is because we administer these federal funding programs. It's federal law and federal funding, um, that really kind of leads what we're able to do. And so, uh, as those change, we want our families to know that they have a pathway to self sufficiency and helping them do that. We've got heightening of technology to increase, um, efficiency and service delivers, delivery, workforce development. And homeownership is a big thrust of what we do. Um, I've talked about transforming communities, which is that last slide there and, um, already. Uh, but I do, because of time is short, I wanna give, uh, some time to, for the council to ask questions. But again, like I said, I'm at your disposal. We've engaged independently, um, formally and informally. We can continue to do that. Um, any invitations that you wanna extend for, uh, committee meetings, for neighborhoods, meetings and things like that? I'm available and our team is available. But if you have any specific questions to the, uh, strategic plan, I, I can take those now in the time that we have remaining.
Thank you, Mr. Embry. We do appreciate you bringing us this information. I know it's so detailed. It has a lot of information that I think each of us would really like to learn more about. What I'm gonna do is ask the president, if we can invite you back for perhaps a committee meeting or committee of the whole, so that we could gain more information about this. But we do have some questions right now. Counselor Moore?
Yeah, thank you, Madam, uh, Pro Tim. Yeah, I was gonna say, I would love for, uh, a presentation to be done at the Community Development Committee, um, so that we could really deep dive into a lot of what the strategic plan has to offer. Um, I know specifically in District Four, and we've had several conversations about this as well, about, you know, even, uh, knowing what's gonna happen with Collegeville, right? Uh, because that is a huge concern, uh, for myself as well as a lot of people. Um, and so I think, you know, in addition to having the community development or come, having you all to come to do a presentation at community development, uh, would also love to have some community conversations as well, uh, just so that people are able to know what's going on and what to expect. Uh, and speak, speak into it, uh, if, if that is possible, uh, because that's a community that has, you know, been here for quite some time, um, has a lot of strong ties, a lot of pride, um, and people wanna be able to be included, uh, in what happens, uh, to their, the future of their neighborhood. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, uh, Madam Pro Tim. Uh, just wanna congratulate you, you all, and just kind of take this moment to just kind of toot y'all's horn because y'all got a hard job. And, um, you know, you house some of our, you know, most vulnerable and lowest income residents. And, you know, I learned from working with you all that a lot of our folks who rely on public housing have worked their whole life and didn't have a retirement, or they suffer from disabilities that, you know, are not physical. You know, they're not apparent when you look at them, um, that they have maybe some kind of cognitive impairment and so forth. And I, I say that because I know a lot of times, uh, some of the stigma is that, you know, people are taking advantage of the system. But, um, and that may occur, but I, I do believe that the role you all play in our community, even, even being a place for children aging out of foster care and just some of the needs you all meet for our community. I wanna just take this opportunity to, to thank you for y'all, the hard work that you all do.
Thank you.
And the, the crises that, you know, you have to manage, uh, with the work that you do. Um, I, I know I wanna, like them, I wanna go deeper in a, the appropriate committee. But I wanted to see if you had anything you wanted to say about just the federal funding freeze threat. And I know, you know, we haven't talked about it a lot in this forum, but, um, you know, the threat it's posing for U A B, which is kind of like the lifeblood of our economy here. And, you know, you all are almost entirely federally funded. Um, what, what, I mean, what's, anything you wanna say about it?
Sure. I mean, we'll, we continue to monitor the situation, um, and engage with our elected officials. We'll be going to D C at least twice in March to talk with folks, um, and express the critical nature of funding. But also, you know, how do we align agendas? Um, so, you know, they've talked about, elected officials talked about, um, the low income housing tax credit program. There will be a tax reform bill. They talked about deregulation. We're regulated by federal government. So we're definitely engaging, um, paying attention and ensuring that our financial kind of house is in order. Um, so that if there are, uh, kind of rough waters ahead, that we can, uh, weather those as best as possible. But again, it goes back to what I talked about, which is partnership. H A B D, the city, the hosts of nonprofits and folks that are serving our, our low income neighbors, B C S. We, we can only survive what's gonna happen through partnerships. So we all gotta kind of work together and, and be in the, on one accord, um, throughout, you know, whatever happens.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you being here today cuz I feel like sometimes we forget about you all cuz you are kind of independent, but you are quasi governmental and, um, you know, to the extent that we can work together to support your lobbying efforts. I know this body goes to Washington and, you know, we advocate for things that are important for the city. And, you know, what you all do for ten thousand or so of our citizens is certainly important. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I wanted to ask you if you have sent copies of your strategic plan to members of the council yet? Or if you have that plan in the?
Some, I'm sure we do. And don't kill me, but I'm gonna look at our, uh, director of P R. That's a thumbs up. So I'm assuming that's a yes.
Okay, good. Um, because these little screens, you know, you can read the title of what you put up there, but beyond that, forget it.
Sure.
Um, and then I wanted to ask you about, um, how South Town is coming along. I, I'd go by there several times a month and I'm just wondering how it's. I mean, do y'all have security, twenty four seven security at your facilities?
So we don't, um, just double check my head. So at a couple of our sites, we have, um, um, gates. So we have, um, guards at the gates. South Town is not one of those. Uh, so at South Town and many of other sites, we have, uh, through the, uh, Community Policing Initiative, C S P. I'm forgetting this, Community Safety Partnership with B P D. There we go. We do pay for, uh, heightened security, for extra patrols, for dedicated, um, a team of officers for our sites. And so they kind of rotate through our sites on a daily basis. Um, at South Town, we don't have dedicated security. We did have some of that during the construction period for the, uh, family building, which is now complete due to some incidents that happened. Uh, but generally, other than that, we don't. Uh, South Town Family also and South Town Senior do have extensive security features in the building, controlled access. And so access into the building and then within the building is very tightly controlled. Um, and so we're proud of what we were able to work with, with the developer and our public safety team on that. But we also, like I said, really depend on BPD to provide the level of kind of public safety that we need.
That's scary. But anyway, so the senior building? When the senior building is completed, will those old buildings be demolished?
Right. So that's correct. And our plan right now, we had a little bit of a delay in some permitting issues, to be honest. So on Thursday, I'll get an updated completion schedule. It was originally on the end of March. So I have an updated completion schedule. But what we had planned, based on that schedule, was to relocate the remaining families this spring. And then the last quarter of this year is when we demolish the remaining public housing buildings.
Next summer? This coming summer?
This coming summer. So the building will be done probably by May. Families will move in May, June, and then the last quarter of this year. So October, November, December is when we anticipate demo to start.
Okay. And do you have an intention to ask the city to improve the lighting on the surrounding streets? Because I notice it seems very bright on University, and then when you turn off onto the side streets, it gets really dark, and that makes the drug dealers hang out there. And if the lighting was better, I would assume drug dealers would go somewhere else where the lights weren't so bright. So is that a plan for the long term of, because I know you've only got one building built?
Right. So absolutely. And so there's a, for the entire site, so the rest of the site will be dedicated to mostly, well, yeah, entirely to commercial purposes. So retail restaurants, hotel, additional housing. And there's a master plan, and it also includes a lighting plan for the entire site, for the streets and walkways and pedestrian access and all those things.
Might be a good idea to move the lighting plan up.
Yeah. And so I'll definitely take a look. We, along with the, you know, we have over three hundred and fifty cameras that feed into the real-time crime center, which we talked about earlier. We also invest a lot of money in upgrading lights at our properties. So I'll get with our team to make sure that we've, you know, just even with the months that we have remaining, that we have adequate lighting for our property.
Good. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you again. And we do appreciate you. I know you all wanted to bring this presentation to us and give us the strategic plan and update. And we will follow through with, on the invitation of Counselor Moore, to get this into a committee. And if you'll please provide the slides to us, then that way we can prepare and we'll be ready for the rest of that presentation.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. At this time, counselors, I would like to acknowledge, we have one of our newest judges present this morning, Judge Fred Boland. Glad to see you, Judge. All right. At this time?
Madam President, I wanted to ask, I think this is the time that I should do it. Ask for reconsideration of the consent agenda, so that I can ask some questions about item nineteen, which I did not hear get put on consent.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you'll guide us through, do we need to go back and take a vote to reconsider the consent agenda, or how will we do this?
Yes, ma'am. Motion to reconsider. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, now motion to re-adopt absent item eighteen. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, item nineteen is left now.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Your question?
Oh, good. Thank you. This item says that we're purchasing from CSX a corridor for Rails to Trails for one point one million dollars. But then, back in the agreement, it says exchange of like-kind property under ten thirty-one of the Internal Revenue Code. And I was trying to figure out, if we're purchasing the property, what are we exchanging? What like-kind property is being exchanged? It's on the first page down at the bottom of the first paragraph. I mean, the first page, at the bottom of the last paragraph on that page. And I just didn't remember that we were exchanging property. I thought we were buying property. So...
Madam Pro Tem?
Yes.
Counselor, we're going to get Colin Alexander to come back in, or another representative from the BDI team to come in and answer that question. Mr. Ryan Jackson is getting him now.
Sounds sort of like a legal question. But anyway, it says it in here twice. First page and the second page talk about this exchange of like-kind property. And then the other question is about the survey. Do we still have city surveyors, or do we have to hire people to survey for us?
We still have them.
So they'll be doing our surveying. So I guess the only question left is this exchange of like-kind property. Like, where is it?
Madam City Attorney said that she's also getting staff who can possibly answer that too.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, we can go ahead.
I was going to say, counselors, I don't... Is the staff available? Do we need to wait a few minutes? Okay. We'll go ahead and continue with the agenda as far as giving our district updates, and then we'll return back to the agenda.
Just lay the item on the table. Motion to lay on the table.
I move. We lay it on the table.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you. That item is now laid on the table, and we'll proceed. Counselor Clark, are you ready?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Madam Pro Tem, thank you. District Eight announcements. We've got a couple of neighborhood meetings. The Bush Hills neighborhood will meet today at six thirty PM in the Bush Hills Connection Complex, which is the former Woodrow Wilson School. The Five Points West Community will also meet this Thursday at six PM in the West Precinct Community Room. Also, note that Birmingham City Schools has been selected as one of only eight school districts nationwide to host the prestigious Peer-to-Peer Jazz Informants Tour. This is presented by the Herbie Hancock Institute of Jazz. There will be two, well, there will be two performances in Birmingham. One is a school-wide assembly that takes place at Parker High School on Thursday at ten thirty AM. And then there will be a jam session that's actually sponsored by the city council. And it's for students and professionals to, you know, get together and jam. And that's going to happen at the Carver Theater at seven PM. And then congratulations to the SWAC for hosting another successful indoor track and field conference championship at the Crossplex. This past weekend, Alabama State University took home the women's team title, while Texas Southern University claimed the title for the men. We look forward to welcoming the SWAC back to District Eight again and again. We've got conference basketball tournament also happening, wait, I'm sorry, conference baseball tournament that's happening at Rickwood Field in May. So we're looking forward to welcoming these sporting events to District Eight. Also, the Southern Museum of Flight is having their annual Black History Month celebration. This year, they're having an event called, we're soaring, I'm sorry. They're having an event called Ben Davis, Watch Him Fly. It's a spectacular one-man stage play by Jay Leon Priggin. And it gives you the incredible tale of General Benjamin O. Davis, Jr., the legendary first commander of the Tuskegee Airmen Red Tails. The show is free and can be seen on February twenty-seventh at five thirty at the Southern Museum of Flight. Additionally, there is a resident Tuskegee Airmen exhibit that is available to view prior to the production. Okay. The Southern Museum of Flight, okay, we're almost done. The Southern Museum of Flight proudly displays what they believe is the only existing B-25 flown by the Tuskegee Airmen. You can see those nose and cockpit, two engines, a propeller, and the tail of our B-25 up close in the museum's south hangar, while the team of skilled volunteers continues to renovate the rest of the aircraft. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Neighborhood Association, or Norwood Neighborhood Association, will meet tomorrow at six PM at the Norwood Community Center. The Collegeville Neighborhood Association will have their Neighborhood Association meeting Monday at six PM at the Antioch Baptist Church. Maple Grove will have their Neighborhood Association meeting at six PM via conference call. Zion City Neighborhood Association will also meet via conference call, as well as the Brownsville Heights Neighborhood Association will meet at six PM at Brownsville Heights Community Center. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The next, get to my page. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, February twenty-sixth at three thirty PM here in the city council chambers. We will be discussing STRs, some zoning ordinance changes, and some appointments to committees. So it will be a full agenda. That's tomorrow at three thirty here in the council chambers. Neighborhood Association meetings, our next one is at six thirty PM on next Monday, the third of March. Also, on Monday, the third of March at six PM, the final Southern Area Rezoning Meeting will be held. Let's see. And it's at the Botanical Gardens, not at the usual meeting place. So people need to take note that it will be at the Botanical Gardens at six PM on the third of March. The... Let's see. Yeah, if you have any other, any concerns or issues, you know, we want you to call three one one, unless you've downloaded the My Beham three one one app to your phone, and then you can send photographs and a description of the issue. We're asking all residents of District Three to continue to visit our website for real-time updates of things that we don't have time to tell you in our little three minutes up here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Smitherman?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. The next budget and finance meeting will meet on Monday, March twenty-fourth at three thirty PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, March nineteenth by noon. This Friday, we will have our fourth annual You Speak, a celebration of Black history, at the Red Mountain Theater located at sixteen hundred Third Avenue South. This will be a celebration of Black history, African-Americans, and labor. That's actually this year's theme. This event is free to the public. Come and support our kids. We will have over eight schools performing and a special performance from the actors of Red Mountain Theaters. Donna Musical is actually going on. I went to go see it about, we can have, it was really good. And then we have over, we have four schools that will have artwork in the lobby. I think we have schools in almost every district, actually, so it should be very, very good. Then also, our youth and government program. YMCA's Alabama Youth Legislative Session will take place this weekend in Montgomery. They'll be taking about thirty Birmingham City school students from Ramsey and Parker. They have all written bills, and will have their mockhouse and senate sessions on Saturday. Tyra Davis from Ramsey was elected to serve as the senate pro tem leader, a first for Birmingham City. And we have leadership on every level from Birmingham City Schools. We have two Supreme Court justices, four governors, cabinet members, house and senate committee chairs, and lobbyists along with delegates in our house. So I'm very proud of our kids. And then also, I know Madam Pro Tem is going to mention about, we know they're playing Wednesday at four thirty, but Ramsey High School Girls Basketball Team will play right after them, is it right after?
Before.
Before them, in Legacy Arena for the Final Four as well. And then PIO has a short slideshow for my mom that will play after council meeting. But I just want to say congratulations to my mom. She was able to get courtroom six sixty, dedicate in her honor. That's a big deal, and we celebrate her retiring from being a judge after twenty-one years. So, thank you, Madam Pro Tem.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. On March the fourth at eleven thirty in conference rooms, D and E Economic Development Tourism will have their regularly scheduled work session. If you'll have your submissions into India Bailey at india.bailey@birminghamale.gov by the end of day on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, which I believe is Thursday. We'd appreciate it. Creston Neighborhood Association will be having a meeting Thursday, February twenty-seventh at six at their regular spot. And also wanted to echo my colleague, Ms. Smitherman's statements in congratulating her mother, or judge, or as she calls herself, my second mother sometimes, because our moms have the same birthday. But I think that Judge Smitherman is an inspiration to a lot of people in this community, in this city. And I was very happy to be able to, I guess, help acknowledge a lifetime of achievement and work towards the city of Birmingham and really the whole, the whole community. So kudos to Judge Smitherman for everything she accomplished.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. And to echo what Counselor Williams said, I want to thank Councilwoman Smitherman for inviting me also to celebrate her mom's legacy. I've known Judge Smithman for a long time. And it was just a joy to be there to see her, you know, not retiring from the judge, which retired from the judgeship, but continuing to work and just really setting the stage for, you know, more African-American women to pave the way, to see, you know, the judges that were there on Friday, you know, just brought joy, you know, to my heart, to let all young women know that they can achieve anything they put their mind to do. So thank you. My sister for inviting me to celebrate your mom and fellowship with your family on her retirement. My announcements, our Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will be held tonight at six PM at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. Dolomite Neighborhood Association will meet tonight also, and they meet on conference call. You can call in at seven two oh eight four three two six six nine. The access code is three seven eight nine four two six. Ennui Ridge Neighborhood will be held on Thursday, February the twenty-seventh, and they meet on Zoom at five thirty. And you can call our office to get their meeting ID and passcode. Sherman Heights Neighborhood Meeting will be meeting on Monday, and they meet on conference call. You can call in by dialing nine five two two oh six four nine one eight. Passcode is two two three four one eight. Central Pratt Neighborhood Meeting will be on Monday, March the thirtieth. Also meet on conference call, and you can call in by dialing seven two oh seven four zero nine seven three two. Passcode is three four triple eight oh eight. The next public safety meeting will be held today at one PM in each city council chamber. If you have questions or concerns, feel free to call our office at two five four twenty-three oh two. Thank you, Madam Pro Tem.
Thank you. Counselor Woods?
Thank you this morning. A couple announcements. So one, I think we all know the road it kind of takes to get our projects done. And so we're excited about one. We took on the reprint of the A.G. Gaston autobiography. And so that story kind of started, I had an opportunity to read Black Titan a couple of years ago, and really enjoyed it, wanted to kind of get my hands on his autobiography and kind of hear his story from his own words. But the book wasn't available. You couldn't find it. Amazon had a copy or two for over two thousand dollars. And so one of our projects we want to do is work with the A.G. Gaston Boys and Girls Club. And what we've done is partnered with them to reprint the book. That book provides them a new revenue source, because now they can sell that book in perpetuity. A hundred percent of those proceeds go to the organization, and it just gives them an additional revenue stream to continue the good work that they're doing. And so I think that, you know, his story, more now, you know, just as much now as ever, is truly inspirational. I think you can truly see, no matter, you know, where you started, you know, what walk of life you're coming from, you can really achieve anything you want to if you'll be, pay attention to where the needs are and find solutions to those. And so the way he would say it would be find a need and fill it. And so we're excited about this project. That book is out. They're actually, the Boys and Girls Club is actually kicking off their sales at the A.G. Gaston Conference today. And so this is their first launch. You can also get the book on greenpowerbook.com and order that. But really excited about them. I think, you know, all of us give a lot of thought to how to use these dollars. And I think this is one that, you know, really you'll be able to see that value down the road and continue to grow. So I want to encourage everyone to check that out. They were nice enough to send everybody a copy over, so I appreciate that. I also want to shout out the Trustful Pell City Alabama Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha I also wanna shout out the Trustful Pell City Alabama Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Chi Fraternity Incorporated. They came out to our community garden cleanup on Saturday, and, and really helped us get a jump on that, uh, raised a lot of impact. And, um, uh, I'll just say there was a, a lot of appreciation from the, the garden team out there, so they appreciated the work. Uh, and, and wanna just shout them out for coming out, I think it, uh, makes an impact when the, when the community is willing to come out and, and help, uh, you know, show interest and invest some sweat equity in some of the things we're doing, and so, uh, great appreciation to that. And, uh, also want to just, uh, fol, follow in with, um, just some accolades to Judge Smitherman, I think, uh, incredible career. And I think, you know, the beauty of having the opportunity to, to really give people their flowers and celebrate them is, I learned a lot about her just from hearing other people's stories and how she played pivotal roles in that. And I think at the end of the day, I think we're all, uh, working hard, trying to accomplish things, but, you know, ultimately, your, your contribution is graded on really what you, uh, do for others, and you can see how many people she lifted up. And so, um, you know, excited about that, and, and congratulations to the family, and, uh, we see a lot of those qualities in, uh, the baby of the family. So, uh, just, uh, uh, honored to kinda work with, uh, uh, with Crystal and the council as well. So congratulations to the, uh, Judge Smitherman and the Smitherman family.
Thank you, Counselor Woods, these are the announcements for District Seven. I would like to ask all councilors and, uh, staff within our group to please, um, offer condolences to my Chief of Staff, Isola Hall. She lost her grandfather, Mr. Robert E. Powles of Hobson City, he was a former mayor of Hobson City. He was eighty-eight years old and served, um, again, as the mayor of Hobson City in previous years, and was a veteran of the U.S. Air Force, so please, um, let's just keep Isola and her family in your prayers. And yes, if you'll allow me to have a motion for UC, for, uh, resolution of sympathy.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And now the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you all very much, I know Isola and her family will appreciate that. Um, today at two thirty PM, we've been talking basketball, 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 and all this morning, we will have a court dedication honoring Coach Emmanuel Tubel. That will be at the Winona High School Gymnasium at two thirty. They'll also be honoring the girls' basketball team who made it to the Elite Eight, but they did not advance to the Final Four. And so we'll have some opportunity also to, um, just visit with the students over there today. I wanna thank those councilors who have helped to, um, support, being sure our students get to attend the game. I know Counselor Smitherman and I, we're very excited for both of those teams to be in there. I believe they're the only teams that are representing the city of Birmingham, so the tournament has been ongoing. But Wednesday, we'll have the showdown in Birmingham over there at the, um, BJCC. Uh, we've heard a lot about, um, reporting illegal dumping, we do remind you that you can dial three one one, or you can, um, log in at MyBeham311 to report any of those illegal dumping, or if you have a missed trash pickup. On Friday, February twenty-eighth, there will be a film premiere called Through the Eyes. This is the James Poindexter, Poindexter Story. Mr. Poindexter is a Roosevelt City District Seven resident who was the superintendent for the restoration, restoration of the Sixteenth Street Baptist Church after the nineteen sixty-three bombing. So at ninety-two years old, he continues to be a living legend. This film will be, um, is being produced by the Black Contractors Association, it'll be on their YouTube channel. So, um, we really encourage everybody to, um, dial into YouTube, I don't have the time, but we'll get that information for you. And you can just see through his eyes, through Mr. Poindexter, how he was able, as a contractor, to restore the church back to, um, some of its current beauty following that tragic bombing. On Tuesday, March fourth, when we talk about mentoring, uh, I don't know if there's any way we could ever fill the shoes that Judge Carol Smitherman, uh, and the work that she did in the city to really mentor women, um, and just through her work, I think she had every job here at City Hall that you could ever have, right? And so she's just, um, really, uh, do join my colleagues in, um, thanking you, Crystal, for, Counselor Smitherman, for, um, really being able to acknowledge your mother's work while she's able to enjoy it. Often, we don't get a chance to give our flowers to our parents when they're living. So, um, glad you had that opportunity to honor your mother, and we all honor her as well. Uh, speaking of mentoring, I'll be work us on a program, a panel, with a group of judges, the Honorable Tanita Kane of the Jefferson County District Court, and the Honorable Katrina Ross, who is of the Birmingham Municipal Court. And, uh, we'll be, uh, talking about mentoring, leadership, and, um, celebrating women in public service. So that will be on Tuesday, March fourth, at the Hill, um, Center Alumni Theater at University. And those are all of my announcements, and now we'll go, we can go back to our table item, and I believe, um,
Make a motion.
Do we have to make a motion? Second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Um, I didn't get the original motion, who made the motion to pass it anywhere? I know we reconsidered the consent agenda, can I get a motion to put it on the floor to discuss? Thank you, Ms. Beaufort.
All right, thank you, and that was a question that was on the table, Attorney King? So after consultation with my team, Counselor Abbott, so this is a tax law provision applicable for two years that doesn't apply to the city but applies to CSX.
Okay, so the, we're not exchanging any like-kind property with them?
No.
Why does it?
It, it, it has to be in there pursuant to the type of agreement in its standard language that has been with, in the previous CSX agreements with the city.
Okay, so we're just buying property, and we're just getting an extension of time to survey it?
Correct.
Okay.
That is another question, Counsel Clark?
Well, I just wanted to comment, like, when I, when the city used to buy property held by private individuals, we would say there might be a threat of condemnation, because we have eminent domain authority. And what it does is it gives the private party more time to, uh, avoid capital gains. So they can, so they can buy similar property within two years or whatever, and then not have to pay capital gains on the proceeds. It's, it's tax law stuff. And I see her nodding her head, but that, that, I don't, she gave it a short answer, but that's my recollection of, of the long answer. So the ten thirty-one is an exchange where you take the proceeds and buy something similar and avoid paying capital gains.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, so now we can vote on the item, I believe.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item passes, thank you very much. Councilors, we don't have any speakers today, and I do want to thank the Birmingham Police Officers who are on duty to, um, offer us protection, I don't have your names, I don't have the sheet of paper, but thank you all for your service, we appreciate it. Anything else, Counselor? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.